I call this meeting to order. Today is, what is today?
September 7th?
September 7th, 5:01 PM. And at this time, I'd like to ask Mrs. Ork to lead us in the place of allegiance.
Please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
They've changed it around a little bit here for me. Okay. The purpose of this meeting, Dr. Rendell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The purpose of tonight's meeting is twofold. The first part of the meeting is to approve the final 2016-2017 budget amendments contained within Consent Agenda A. These include General Operating Fund, the Debt Service Fund, Capital Projects Fund, Food Services Fund, federal funds, Internal Service Fund, and finally, the Enterprise Fund for the Extended Day Program. These amendments are based on the final results of operations and activities in those various funds. In addition, the Board has in front of them for approval the Superintendent's Annual Financial Report and Cost Report in substantially completed form for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2017, contained within Consent Agenda B. In addition, on the Action Agenda for the Board's approval is a Categorical Flexible Spending Resolution as authorized by Florida Statute 1011.62, Part 6B. The second part of tonight's meeting is for the Board to adopt millage rates and a budget for the 2017-18 fiscal year after receiving public input. TRIM, or Truth in Millage Advertisements, have been placed according to the specifications of law. TRIM requires that the first issue we discuss at the public hearing is concerning the proposed millage rates for the fiscal year. By law, the budget is required to be adopted after the adoption of the millage and after public input on the budget. Mr. Chair, after the Consent Agenda and Action Agendas are approved, I will ask that Mr. Morrison review the proposed 2017-18 millage and budget, followed by input from the public. Then the Board will adopt appropriate motions with roll call votes.
Okay. Thanks, Chair. Okay. The next item is the adoption of the orders of the day. Would anyone like anything moved from the Consent Agenda to the action?
Mr. Chair, if I may interrupt. I would like to inform the Board at the conclusion of the Action Agenda, I am going to propose that the Board adjust its advertised meeting schedule. We have a regular business meeting scheduled for next Tuesday, September 12. I'm not sure we will be in session. I'm not sure what we will be doing next Tuesday, so I'm going to ask the Board to postpone that meeting to September 19. But we'll do that after the last Action Agenda item.
Very good. Okay. Anything else?
Move that we adopt the orders of the day as published.
And the second was?
Me.
Ms. Justice, okay. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Okay. Okay. And the next item is Action I, the approval of Resolution 2018.03. Citizen input. Oh, citizen input. There you go. My golly, okay. I had my notes messed up there. And the only speaker today is Liz Cannon. Liz, you want to come on up?
Good evening. I had a very different speech prepared for today, but in light of recent events, I've decided to change it, and I wanted to just thank you. Thank you to Dr. Rendell and staff for having the foresight to close school for Thursday and Friday, providing our employees, parents, and families of Indian River County enough time to prepare their homes and evacuate if necessary. And another thank you for preparing payroll in advance because it does provide these employees with the opportunity. We don't know if we're going to be able to do payroll next week, so by doing this, it allows them to be able to afford whatever supplies and things they may need. But I just wanted to make sure that I thanked you for this because I really do believe you put the employees of Indian River County first. So, thank you.
Thank you, Liz. Okay. Now, we need a motion on the Consent Agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, 5 to 0. Now, we'll move over to the Action Agenda. Action A, Approval Resolution 2018-03 to exercise flexibility, authority over categorical funds pursuant to Florida Statute Number 1011.626-6-B. Dr. Rendell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In Action Item A, we are wishing or seeking approval to exercise flexibility over the instructional materials funds from the state for a total amount of $1,141,064.59. This is supported by statute. Mr. Morrison, anything to add?
Not at this time, Dr. Rendell. Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion? Here you are.
Can you please explain, in the area of student transportation, how and what flexibility this amount comes in play on that?
Just a moment. So, during the 2008-9, 9-10 recession, school boards petitioned the legislature to allow us to exercise flexibility over state funds that carry heavy restrictions on them and how these funds can be used. One of the categories that the legislatures granted the authority for school district to exercise that flexibility over is in the area of student transportation. The various categories that are listed are specified by statute. The thinking at the time was that we're going through a recession. If there's no more money, at least give us the authority to redirect the funds that we do get from the state in a manner that the Board deems appropriate. So, transportation was one of those categories that was identified in order to give the school districts flexibility.
Okay. I understand. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
To be clear, however, we are not, this is not for transportation. This is purely for instructional materials that were...
Yes, ma'am.
Any other discussion?
Do I need to read that as my motion? Do I need to read this as my motion, or move approval is sufficient?
Yes, sir. Your motion was perfectly appropriate.
Thank you.
It will be a roll call vote, as Mr. Searcy was about to call.
Okay. Now, if we can have Ms. Nancy call the roll, please.
Ms. Justice?
Yes.
Ms. Simczak?
Yes.
Mr. Frost?
Yes.
Ms. Zork?
Yes.
Chairman Searcy?
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously in favor of the motion with a five to zero vote.
Okay. All right. The second item is Millage Rate and Budget Hearing Outline. Dr. Rendell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In Action Item B, we're going to discuss the rollback rate and the proposed 2017-18 millage rates. Mr. Morrison? Thank you very much, Dr. Rendell. Could a technician in the back room please turn on the monitor? Thank you. So, at this juncture, Board members and public, we are proposing for 2017-18, a millage rate of 7.053 mils. In 2016-17, the school board adopted a millage rate of 7.410 mils. The required local effort this year is 4.305, a decrease of .257, or 5.63 percent. Local discretionary remains the same at .748. The special millage referendum has decreased from .6 mils to .5, or a decrease of .1, or 16.67 percent. Capital outlay, the proposed amount is at the maximum of 1.50 mils for a total reduction in the millage rate of .357, or 4.81 percent. So, the proposed millage this year is lower than the adopted millage for last year by 4.81 percent. Under the Florida Department of Revenue's Prescriptive Calculations, we have to compare the rollback rate to the proposed millage rate. The proposed millage rate is 7.053, as we mentioned, and the rollback rate is 6.975, for a decrease of .0, excuse me, for an increase of .078, or 1.12 percent higher compared to the rollback, to the rollback rate. So, how does this affect a taxpayer? It depends upon your assessment, but we like to always show the value of a $200,000 home. In 2016-17, this homeowner would have paid $1,296.75 under this theoretical example. In 2017-18, taxes would be $1,234.28, or a tax decrease of $62.47, or 4.81 percent less. This assumes no increase in the assessed valuation on this home. However, as reported by the property appraiser, some of the property values in Indian River County have decreased, excuse me, increased on the average of 7.66 percent. So, when you factor in the Savior Homes, which is, your assessed valuation is capped at 3 percent, the 2016-17 taxes, as stated, would be $1,296.75, as compared to the 2017-18 tax amount of $1,276.59, or again, a decrease of $20.16, or 1.55 percent. At this time, Mr. Chairman, this concludes the presentation of the proposed 2017 millage rates, and it would be appropriate to sound the halls for any public input on the proposed 2017-18 millage rates.
Thank you, Mr. Morrison. Dr. Rendell, have you documented that this public hearing was properly advertised in accordance with state statute?
Yes, Mr. Chair. We did properly advertise the meeting.
We now recess this meeting to conduct the public hearing as advertised. The public hearing is now in session. Dr. Rendell, are there any written responses to the advertised public hearing to be read at this time?
No, sir. We did not receive any written responses.
The public is invited to address us at this time? Last chance. Okay. If there's, is there an individual representing an organization or his own personal public interest who wishes to speak? Answer is no. The Chair concludes that the announced public hearing, September 7, 2017, has been conducted pursuant to the notice, and that ample opportunity to address this issue has been provided to all. So, we want to reconvene the meeting at this time. And we need to have a motion, and I think that it probably needs to read exactly as it is here. I need to have a motion.
I move to approve Resolution Number 2018-04, adopting the millage rates as advertised for 7.053 mils, representing required local effort, discretionary operating, additional voted millage, and capital outlay.
Second. Any discussion? Laura? I didn't know if that was your hand going up there. Okay. Okay. At this time then, we'll call, have a roll call. Ms. Esplin?
Ms. Justice?
Yes.
Ms. Simczak?
Yes.
Mr. Frost?
Yes.
Ms. Zork?
Yes.
Chairman Searcy?
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously in favor of the motion with a five to zero vote.
Thank you. Okay. Discussion of the proposed budget. Dr. Rendell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In Action Item E, we are looking at a slight discussion on the 2017-18 operating budget. Mr. Morrison? Thank you very much, Dr. Rendell. The 2017-18 proposed budget is $286,892,696. The 2016-17 budget was approximately $286,284,651, or zero, or $150,045, or 0.05 percent increase. The General Operating Fund is set at $174,493,373, or an increase of $2,895,690, or 1.69 percent increase, primarily due to the infusion of state funding in the FEFP program over the prior year. The Debt Service Budget is set at $23,757,689, or an increase of $1,572,676, or a 7.09 percent increase. Again, you will see the fund balance in the Debt Service Fund increase as we're putting required funds in the Sinking Fund, which is a special financing that we have for the 2010 Qualified School Construction Bonds. Capital Projects Fund is set at $41,597,304, or a decrease of $10,387,717, or 19.98 percent, almost 20 percent. Again, this is partially because of the spend down of the COP funds for the Beechland and the Citrus Bowl Project. In addition, we had an adjustment coming forward of the Roll Forward Funds, which were not finalized at the tentative hearing. Special Revenue Food Service Fund increases is set at $12,059,367, or $343,128, or 2.92 percent. The Special Revenue Federal Grants are set at $10,190,618, or a decrease of $289,026, or 2.76 percent. It represents, most of that represents the spend down of some of the Title I and the IDEAA federal funding. The Group Insurance Fund is set at $23,666,149, or an increase of $6,98,281, or 34.71 percent. As you are aware, the Board did a capital, excuse me, did a transfer from the General Operating Fund to the Insurance Fund to stabilize the fund. That fund is no longer in a deficit fund balance position, and the fund balance is, in this fiscal year, there's another transfer, according to the state-approved plan, of 1.566 million. The Enterprise Day, Enterprise Fund, excuse me, Extended Day Program is set at $1,128,196, or a slight decrease of $82,987, or a 6.85 percent decrease, for a grand total of $286,892,696, or a 0.05 percent increase. Mr. Chairman, at this time, this concludes the presentation of the 2017-18 proposed budget, and it would be appropriate to sound the halls for any input, public input on the proposed budget.
Good. Let's see. Dr. Rendell, have you documented that this public hearing was properly advertised in accordance with the state statute?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, we did properly advertise the meeting.
We now recess this regular Board meeting to conduct the public hearing as advertised. The public hearing is now in session. Dr. Rendell, are there any written responses to the advertised public hearing to be read at this time?
No, sir. We did not receive any written responses.
The public is invited to address this issue at this time. Is there an individual representing an organization or his own personal public interest who wishes to speak? Hearing none. Okay. The Chair concludes that the announced public hearing on September 7, 2017, has been conducted pursuant to notice, and that ample opportunity to address the issue has been provided to We want to reconvene the Board meeting at this time. I need a motion to adopt.
I move to approve Resolution 2018-05, adopting the fiscal year 2017-18 beginning budget as presented at this hearing.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes. Okay. I just have a short statement. I believe that the budget review process is flawed and lacks true transparency, does not give backup information or rationale for lying items. Detailed information is not provided, and when questions are asked, it takes weeks and sometimes months to get a reply. Between the August 1 meeting and now, there was plenty of time to set up department supervisor meetings to vet out budget requests with Board members, but instead of trying to fix the process this year, the task has been shuffled off to next year. As your elected representative of the students, parents, and taxpayers of Indian River County, I cannot vote yes for the use of $287 million of taxpayers' money if I do not have access to clearly know what's in it.
Any other discussion? Okay. Hearing none. Then Nancy, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Justice?
Yes.
Ms. Simczak?
Yes.
Mr. Frost?
Yes.
Ms. Zork?
No.
Chairman Searcy?
Yes.
The motion was carried with a four to one vote.
Thank you very much. The last item, X, I guess, is the closing comments. Dr. Rendell?
Mr. Chair, if I could, we have a regularly scheduled Board meeting for next Tuesday, September 12. The Board adopts its schedule of meetings every November, so this is, you know, it's on the schedule and that kind of thing. I would propose that the Board postpone that meeting, move it from September 12 at 6:00 PM to September 19 at 6:00 PM. So, we'd need a motion.
Need a motion? Okay. Could I get a motion on that, please? Moving the next Tuesday's meeting to the 19th.
I'll make a motion to move the public business board meeting from the 12th Tuesday to the 19th Tuesday.
Second.
6:00 PM.
6:00 PM.
And second. Okay.
Chairman Searcy, I see on here Board Member Matters and discussion has been removed from the agenda. Are we going to have an opportunity to speak to Board Member Matters at this meeting?
This is just, the meeting today is just for the budget.
I have something I'd like to share before we close the meeting, whenever you feel appropriate.
Well, just a minute. We have a, we have a motion in a second. Would it involve this item?
No, sir.
Okay. Then we're going to get your turn in just a minute.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. We have a motion in a second to change the meeting date. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, 5 to 0. Now, we're going to have this as Member Matters. Okay. This is X to X one. Okay. Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to take a minute because I don't think I really ever realized the role that the school district plays in providing shelter for evacuees during a hurricane. And now, being so close to it, I really realized that while everyone is preparing their homes and teachers had kids in classrooms and think, you know, I was very thankful that Dr. Rendell made the decision to give teachers off Thursday and Friday. I thought it was wonderful. I thought it was appropriate. But it really struck me, the fact that our principals and, you know, they have kids and lives, and yet they're opening up shelters. And I can tell you a couple places that won't be shelters. My house will not be a shelter. I have to, there's a mandatory evacuation. Vera Beach 32963 Newspaper's office will not be a shelter. But our schools will, and that is a powerful thing. So, I just want everyone in the community to know, if you don't have somewhere to go, you can come to one of our shelters. And perhaps Dr. Rendell can mention what some of those are, but I think, again, you know, we are such an important part of the community, and our staff, we're very committed. So, I just wanted to share that because I think it's a really powerful thing.
Thank you very much. Anybody else in Member Matters?
I just, I'll just say I want to thank Dr. Rendell and all of the staff, and those that are working well. Those who are off on Thursday, today, and tomorrow, there are district members who will be working to just keep things going. So, I appreciate your staff and you for keeping things going so well with all these issues that have come up. They've been handled so fantastically. So, thank you, Dr. Rendell.
Sean.
Yes, I'd like to echo that and all the hard work, a lot of unsung heroes out there. And also, folks, our Governor has asked, and the community is responding, that if you're available or if you're in the area, that after this, we're going to need volunteers. So, visit volunteerflorida.org and sign up if you're able, because as a community, it's going to, we're going to have to come together to resolve and work together and make our community even better than it is now. VolunteerFlorida.org.
Okay. Seeing nothing else to come before this fine body, we'll adjourn the meeting.
Closing comments, sir.
Closing comments? Okay. We'll hear those.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do want to echo some of the comments that have already been made. We did officially close school Thursday and Friday, and most of our employees do have the time off to prepare their houses and their homes and/or evacuate. But a lot of our employees were actually working today and will be working tomorrow, readying the shelters and also preparing all of the other schools to make sure that they're going to be buttoned up, so to speak, for the impending storm. Some of the, some of the people in the Cabinet, some of the leaders have done a great deal of work in the last 48 hours or so to help us get ready for that. Mr. Teske has been instrumental in taking over as the Assistant Superintendent for Operations, making sure that all of our schools are ready, the shelters are ready. He is our point contact with the EOC. He will be at the EOC when the weather event begins and will be our liaison between the EOC and our school system. We do have six schools that will open and shelters on Saturday. Felsmer Elementary, Sebastian River Middle School, Oslo Middle School, and Vero Beach High School's Freshman Learning Center will be general population shelters. Liberty Magnet Elementary School will be a pet-friendly shelter, and Treasure Coast Elementary will be a special needs shelter. Those are the shelters that are going to be opening up Saturday morning at 8:00 AM. And we do that in conjunction with the EOC and the Red Cross. So, there's a lot of inter-agency agreement and work that goes on there, but most of the work is done by the leadership at the school, preparing the building and operating the building. Maintenance personnel are involved, food services personnel are involved, transportation is involved in operating these shelters. Mr. Green has been out visiting schools as well, making sure that everything is ready to go. He supervises some schools. He visited those schools and some others today. And I do want to give one more final shout-out to Mr. Morrison and the Finance Department. It was their idea to pay our employees early, and they had to do overtime, so to speak, some, a lot of work yesterday. Was it just yesterday? Seems like many days ago. But to get that ready, direct deposits going out and paper checks and that kind of thing. And I just think it was one more thing for our employees to know that they're valued, that we would do that in the light of the impending storm. So, I just wanted to take a few minutes to thank those people that are involved, Mr. Chair.
Is Mr. Morrison going to have off Saturday and Sunday, or?
Definitely Saturday and Sunday, but we'll see about the rest.
No, that's really a neat thing. I'm glad that you've done that, Carter. I mean, it didn't just happen.
Right.
It took a lot of work, so thank you very much. We get on to you a lot, but you deserve a lot of credit. Is there anybody else that wants to say anything?
You sure? I'm good.
Okay. This meeting is adjourned.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Searcy. The purpose of the meeting is to discuss with the Board pending litigation. I anticipate that the closed session will take not more than 45 minutes. The individuals who will be in attendance at the meeting are the four school board members who are present, which would be Mrs. Justice, Mr. Frost, Mr. Searcy, and Mrs. Zork. The Superintendent, Dr. Rendell, will also be present. I'll be present as your legal counsel, and a court reporter will also be present. Mr. Searcy, at your convenience, you can recess this meeting, and we will adjourn to the closed session, and then reconvene down here after.
Okay. We're going to recess this meeting.
Thank you.
Back and ready?
I want to reopen the public meeting, reconvene this meeting at this time, and it's 6:06 PM. Is there any public comment on this particular item? See you, Non. Okay. The item, action item is on a proposed release and settlement agreement in the charter school funding dispute litigation. Dr. Rendell.
Thank you, Mr. Sirsi. Board members, you have before you for consideration a proposed release and settlement agreement that completely resolves the pending litigation between the school board and your five charter schools with regard to the point six millage and a pro-rata share dispute that we've had with the charter schools. The financial arrangements are laid out in the proposed agreement. The five charter schools have all agreed to it and have signed the document, and it is here for your consideration and approval this evening.
I hear a motion.
I move to approve the release and settlement agreement as tendered by the five charter schools.
Second.
We got a second by Mr. Just. Any discussion? You're not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Four, zero, down up there. Motion carries four to zero. Okay, we're going to adjourn the public meeting now.